A W R, Aquilaca Reg Center, in which lots and lots of kids go, whether it's after school and they go and have fun or go and get a chance to do some of their homework. Another thing that we've got going on also is our master plan. For the first time since the mid-eighties, we now have a master plan in which, again, the public has had input on that plan. And we now know, and will know in the next couple of months, the next couple of, well, not the next couple of months, we'll finalize the master plan so that we know where Socorro is headed in the next five, fifteen, and twenty years. And again, it's really exciting because all of us are partaking in this process. And it's another way that we keep Socorro moving forward. All that is possible because of the unity of the city council, which has also been unanimous in this city manager selection process. And I want to go ahead and take the time just to recognize our council members and just for you all to see the hard work that they've done in this election process and all the work that they've done. And you see how unity helps not only our city, but it gives us an overall better image. We've got from District One, Ms. Maria Reyes. From District Two, we have Ms. Gloria Rodriguez. From District Three and our mayor pro temp, we have Ms. Mary Garcia. From District Four, we have Mr. Jesse Ganda. And our representative at large, we have Mr. Willie Madrid. Before we begin the process, I also want to thank some of our dignitaries that are here tonight and just give them a quick minute to just say what it's like to be part of this process. We have one of our state representatives, Mr. Chente Quintanilla, if you would like to come up service.
Thank you, Augusto. I think it's great that you are going to try to make this whole system transparent. Make everybody to have, you know, an opportunity to deal with the issues of a city manager. Because it's a very important position. I've got a question that I will ask later on about a city manager. And, you know, we see people like George Wilson in El Paso, which does a great job. I just got back from Washington this afternoon and I read about the city manager in the area, you know, what he was doing. And the things that are going on in Socorro right now, some people might not like him, other people like him. But if we see progress, if we see what's going on in the city of Socorro and people can see the things that are happening, I think it makes it more transparent and makes it easier for people to believe in city governments. So I am very pleased to be invited tonight to be a part of this process because the process that you have in place is what the people should. And I'm really, I mean, disappointed that we really don't have a full house because the people that are not here today will be the ones who will be complaining. Because if they did not hear about the process and if they would be here and hear the process, I think all of us would be much better off. So I want to thank those of you that want to get involved and stay involved because like everything else, if you don't go and if you don't exercise your right, don't cry. You know, if you exercise your right, then you have the right to talk about it and disagree, learn your beat and disagree. So thank you for having me here, Tuzaliz, for everything.
We also have one of our Socorro ISD trustees, Mr. Paul Gettman.
Thank you, Tuzaliz. Just like Mr. Quintanilla said, it's very important. We all have to be involved. Being a school board member, why am I involved and how do we get involved from the city to the school district? The city of Socorro has a school district here in the city of Socorro. We go to the only city that involves two cities, El Paso and the city of Socorro. The city of Socorro is growing, so is the school district. We need some infrastructure along with the city and along with the school district. We have the City Water School Act. It's a two-mile radius that the city has been working on for the past two years. Hopefully, with the new city manager, and after it gets placed, we'll be able to prove that. It's a big grant, it's a two-mile radius for sidewalks. We need sidewalks here in the city of Socorro to help the schools, to help the city and the school district work together. We also need flashing lights. Flashing lights cost money, but we need involvement between the city and the school district. It's one entity together as one team. We all have to get involved. And I applaud the city and the city council for working together to make this item a transparency. We have two of my individuals. And I see them there, and I see both of them. I talked to both of them. It's hard to make a decision. Right now, the district is going to go through the same situation when Dr. George will believe us in a couple of months. And we're going to be electing a new, I'm sorry, not electing, we're going to be approving a new city, a new school district, a new superintendent. And the search committee, it's very difficult. But it's the best process that we can have is having a search committee and being involved. The people that are here are the people that are going to be involved. And like Chente Quintanilla said, stay ready. We need people to be involved. If nobody's involved, the city's not going to grow and the city is growing. So I want to commend the city council for picking a search committee. And I want to congratulate the two finalists and wish them best of luck. Thank you.
And also last but not least, partly unification in this whole process has also been Mr. Mayor Piri Lopez. So let me go ahead and explain a little bit about what's going to happen tonight. It's one of those events where, at the direction of council, you all are going to be part of that process. And your input is going to be very, very important to them. What we'll go ahead and do in the next few minutes is all of you are going to be receiving index cards. And you can get those from Mr. Dave Garcia in the back. And what you can do is ask any questions that you wish to ask of our candidates today. What some of your concerns are, what some of your direction that you would like to see the city go in it, where you would like to see the city in five, ten, fifteen years. And again, we're going to have a moderator. We'll have a moderator and he'll go ahead and in a debate-style question and answer, he'll go ahead and ask those questions of our candidates. And within that time, you'll be able to see the responses of the candidates and you'll be able to get input as far as where they stand. And you'll be able to assess a little bit more as to who the better candidate should be for us that'll be the permanent city manager. So if I can get you all to do, or actually, if I can get Mr. Garcia to go ahead and pass out the index cards. And we'll have some of our members from the Socorro Police Officer Association also pass out some of those index cards. And then we'll collect them up in a few minutes. While you do that, I also want to thank a couple of people that set this up today. The people that are always behind the scenes that made this place look great, that set up the chairs and pay attention to the detail. And I want to thank Mr. Richard Gutierrez and his Public Works Department, who put this out there. It looked really great for us. He did a nice job. He also worked closely with the Socorro Police Officer Association. And Sergeant Orta is also one of the representatives. And they're here today to assist us. So thank you, everyone, for that. I'd ask that you take approximately fifteen, twenty minutes to go ahead and fill out your cards. And again, any questions that you can think of our candidates. And we'll introduce the candidates to you a little bit later as soon as we start the debate. Mr. Lopez is going to go ahead and bring the candidates up here. Again, they'll formally introduce themselves in a few minutes. As you're finishing up your questions, if you can just go ahead and raise your card. And one of our members from the Socorro Police Officer Association or Mr. Garcia will pick up those questions for you. Make sure you give your questions to either Sergeant Orta or Mr. Garcia. Do we have any more questions? Did everybody get an opportunity to write down their questions? Do we have anyone's questions? Before we begin the moderation, I want to go ahead and introduce our mayor and our city council and give them an opportunity, about two, three minutes, so that way they can express how they feel about this process and what it's like to partake in this process. I want to go ahead and begin with Mr. Lopez.
Good afternoon, again. This process started about four months ago and it's been very exciting. And I've been waiting, I think, so long to get to this point. And I do remember back in 2002, when I got elected for office, it was another agenda to get to this point, including the master plan. And now that we're here, I want to thank you because you're here because you're part of this project. And at the end of the day, this is for you all, for Socorro residents. And I want you to give your input, good questions, tough questions, questions that might clarify topics that we have in our community, our city, our historic city of Socorro, that this year is going to be the 321, 21st anniversary. So thank you for being here. And good questions for the candidates, please. Okay? Buenas tardes, gracias. Thank you.
Our at-large representative, Mr. Willie Madrid.
I just want to say thank you to everybody here. As you can see, this is something new to grow. And it's something that we should appreciate forever because this is the first step of an exploration. I've been here thirty years and I've been hoping for this in these thirty years that I've been residing in Socorro. Thank God that we're starting with this process. We have some candidates that are outstanding. And what you say, the input that we get from you, is going to select these candidates because they are representing the city of Socorro and obviously, they're representing you. So what you say is going to make a lot, a lot of impact as how the city grows. And I see it growing in a positive way. That's the main thing. And secondly, like I said, it's what you say that counts, not us as council, but the people of Socorro. So for that, I'm very glad. And like I said, I want to thank all of you that are here. And hopefully, as time goes on, see more and more input from the community, which is what we want. We want to hear from you. You are the community. You are Socorro. Thank you very much.
From District One, we have Representative Ms. Maria Reyes.
Good afternoon. I'm glad that you're all here to make a very important decision as to how you want the future of Socorro to be. And in that direction, we're looking for positive. And we will, when we select either one of these, they are outstanding, outstanding, excuse me, outstanding candidates. Their qualifications are just unbelievable. And with either one, and I wish both of them, very, very good luck, we will progress for the future of Socorro. Thank you very much.
From District Two, we have Representative Gloria Rodriguez.
Good afternoon and welcome. What can I tell you that they haven't said? Yes, I remember something. A very small group of people in Socorro are always asking for clarity. This council has always had clarity. And this is another example of it. We have brought to you two very, very good candidates for your information. So all you have to do to have clarity, clarity that you think you don't have, is to go ask the relevant information. And this is one more example. Welcome, everybody. I wish both of you good luck because you both are tremendous. So, thank you.
From District Three and our mayor pro temp, Ms. Mary Garcia.
Good afternoon. But we, our former city manager, Mr. Soco, is here. And when he announced his resignation, it was a difficult time for us. But we knew we were going to step back to the plate and we really wanted to get something exceptional. It's been a process for all of us. And having these two great candidates before you just shows a lot of work and time to put into it. We've had commissioners that met with them this afternoon and I got two of my appointments to call me. And immediately, they were overwhelmed. They said, "Wow, you have some very impressive people here." So as Ms. Reyes said, it doesn't matter which one of them is chosen, we're going to have an excellent city manager. So once again, good luck and congratulations.
And Representative from District Four, Mr. Jesse Ganda.
Welcome. They basically said it all, so I'm going to keep it very short. Thank you all for being here. This council, when we decided to do the city manager search, we said one thing was going to be our priority. And that was to make sure first of all, the best qualifications got this job. I think you can see from the two people sitting here that we've accomplished that. We made sure that we did nationwide search out of fifty-two applicants, and these were the top two. It might have been that everybody else said this is a win-win situation for Socorro. However, it's also a tough decision for Socorro. We're faced with two valuable candidates, two people that bring a lot to the table. And we need your input now. Now we need every single one of you, regardless of whose districts you live in, because it's a tight race right now. And we need your all's inputs. So again, thank you all for being here. And that's it. Thanks.
On that note, let's go ahead and begin the process. First, before we begin, I want to go ahead and introduce our moderator. His name is Mr. Hanya Abayia. Mr. Abayia is one of the leading political bloggers in El Paso and in West Texas. He's worked on several campaigns for several different candidates. He's often asked to serve as a debate moderator of panelists. And he's often a guest speaker on several different talk shows. So we're very fortunate to have him as our guest moderator. I'm going to go ahead and turn over the floor to Mr. Abayia and go ahead and let the process begin.
Thank you, Judge. Mr. Mayor, members of council, Representative Quintanilla, most importantly, the citizens of Socorro are going to welcome you here this evening. It's very rare that you give an opportunity to really get involved in an important decision-making process like this one. And I think it speaks volumes that you all are here and showing that you're invested in your community and the decisions that come forward. So we're going to jump right into this and get into asking questions of our candidates. First, we have Mr. Oscar Rodriguez and Mr. Willie Northley. So you all give them a big round of applause. And these are questions from you all. And we'll probably jump in with a couple of follow-ups if need be along the way. The first question actually comes from Representative Quintanilla. How do you plan to distance yourself from the political pressures that you may be confronted with in your day-to-day operations of the city? And give an example of where you've had to deal with that issue. We'll start with Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Okay, very good. If I may just take just a couple of seconds to say thank you very much, people. Having you here, I'm very pleased. It's just a honor to be here. How do I distance myself from the political process in the community? And following up with that, I'm sorry.
The question is, how do you distance yourself from political pressures that you may be confronted with? How do I distance myself from political pressures?
Well, first of all, it's important to understand that in a position like this, in essence, what you are responding to, your job is to respond to political questions, to respond to political decisions that are made. You are the implementer. You're the type of person that takes that political decision, political policy that's made and implemented. And so in that sense, what you want to do is channel and direct that political decision into action. Now, I think what you're talking about here is that once a decision's made, that in between that process, sometimes there can be political pressure or just pressure, period, for you to vary from what that decision is, et cetera. And so I would tell you that as a city manager, part of, as a better city manager, part of my value is my ability to withstand some of that pressure, both in character, as I've practiced other places and I've seen it and I've had a chance to deal with it. And having been called on a number of occasions to... And having been called on a number of occasions to stand strongly in spite of the fact that the advice or the decision that you were making was not necessarily at the time the most politically advantageous decision, et cetera. So I do have experience with that. And then there's something else. As an administrator, what you try to do as much as possible is to decide and administer with data, with information, based on facts, et cetera. And so by keeping that information and data front and center, continually flowing the political decisions or the political pressure that you would get, that don't jive with that data, then has a harder time maybe to carry the day. So again, we do it as, you just have experience dealing with situations where you have to make a hard decision in spite of pressure. One, and two is, you try and administer with that.
Thank you. Mr. Northfleet?
First of all, say thank you for inviting me, and I'm very happy and proud to come out and trying to compete for a position that both of us have usually gained from, particularly from my experience, as well as providing services for the residents of Soporo. And in order to operate in any city, you're always faced with political ramifications. It is a political environment, that is what we live in, that is what it's about. However, under a council-manager form of government, there's a clear distinction that has been made. One is, the city council is the one who sets the policy for the city, and the administrator or manager is the one who carries those policies out. The thing is, the key is council collectively, meaning that this is the voice of the council and the policy that the council has approved and which the administrator-manager will directly carry it out. So to evade the politics, there is no evasion of politics. It's understanding that your action is the result of council decision or the direction provided through the city council. My role would be simply carry it out in the best professional manner that you can, recognizing that there's always individual opinions, but the solution is always carrying out the council's decision. And once you realize that distinction, it becomes very easy. But the truth of the matter is, you can never distance yourself from the politics, but the thing you always want to do is take action based on the collective decision of the city council.
Thank you very much. As we move forward, I'm going to ask the, both of the candidates, if we can limit your responses to just a couple of minutes. If you need to go longer, certainly understandable, but we have a lot of questions to get to. Just want to maximize the amount of time we have here. Just a quick follow-up to that. How do you all balance the accessibility of the community with being able to make a decision that may be unpopular, though the right decision? We'll start with Mr. Northfleet.
First of all, the perspective that I always try to do is analyze the solution that you're carrying out, not so much the feeling part of the decision. Because living in the world today, it is about tough choices. It's always pros and cons, you always miss direction, as well as direction that go in opposite ways. The role that I would have to serve and do serve is to balance the information, to provide pros and cons of the decision. Once a decision is made, it's just merely of carrying it out, recognizing that everything isn't going to be popular, but it's from the best solution or best practices or the best environment that we have to offer under the circumstances that we have. So it is never a simple matter. We're human, we have emotions, we have feelings. But my role would be trying to narrow it down to take the best route. And with that, it is the heat that comes with that, but that's part of the job and that's an expectation that I would have, is that it's not about what's popular, it's about what's wise and what's true for the city of Soporo.
Thank you, Mr. Northfleet. Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes, two things to that. One is, do you keep clear the overall direction that the city makers, the policymakers, have set for you as a community, and want to get to there? So along the way, and when you get to those things, you make many small decisions along the way. And so along the way, when you come to difficult decisions to make, you ask, well, would that get us there closer, would that get us there faster, or is that possibly going in a different direction? And as the debate takes place, make sure all sides have good information. You make sure that everyone is aware of the consequences, the costs of going one direction and the other. You make sure that there's a robust decision. Hopefully, out of that process, there's a decision is made. If it comes down to the city manager, if it's a basic decision, you make clear to everybody, look, I will always make a technical decision. And so given that, if it comes to that, I'm just glad to make that a technical decision given that everyone's had a chance to have a good...
Okay, we'll get back to the questions on the cards here submitted from the crowd. Real two quick, short answer questions. Have either of you been to Soporo prior to seeking this position? And are both of you bilingual? A significant portion of the population of Soporo is Spanish-language dominant. So I wanted to make sure that you understood what your language is.
Basically, this is my first opportunity to come to the city of Soporo doing this particular process. I do understand that it is a scenario where there are individuals who do not speak English a great deal, as well as may not be proficient. The position that I have at the city of Compton, we always had an interpreter to actually exchange in the language. But the role of a problem is not necessarily always language. It's whether or not a person is getting results. I think that most times when a person have a problem, it is not really elaborate. It's almost straight to the point as to what has to be done or attempted. And I think that that wouldn't necessarily create a language barrier, particularly when there's others who can help to explain what is exactly going on. And my bilingual skills are very limited.
Mr. Rodriguez? Thank you very much. Mayor Lopez, does the city currently have a translator on staff? Moving on to the questions from the audience, there's a couple of them that I wanted to get to. It's all pretty interesting. Do the candidates find this whole process somewhat out of touch with other cities' hiring practices? This is a unique process. Soporo's sort of leading the way here in having the accessibility with the community prior to hiring a city manager that's not traditionally done. What are your thoughts on that process?
Basically, thinking about it, this is the first experience that I've had, well, really, it's the second experience that I had, which had a public forum involved. I think the way of the future is to provide public input, meaning residents have an opportunity to see and hear what's going on, as well as participate in it. I think that that's the best expression of democracy, is about public involvement, public transparency with exactly decisions that are going to be made for the future of the city. I do feel that this is the way that most people are now going, but most definitely, ten years ago, this has probably been heard of.
Yes, first of all, I want to say this is a great idea. It's an idea that a lot of other communities have followed. And I applaud you for that. I have participated in the past in a process where the finalists were invited to a community gathering. And so I've seen it, read about it, played with it.
Did you win that one?
No, that's why I'm here.
Further up the screen, Mr. Rodriguez. One of your questions from the audience. If you were selected to be city manager, would you live in Soporo? Or would you live in the region somewhere? We'll start with Mr. Rodriguez.
Well, I want to tell you, one of the big reasons that I was interested in Soporo, that attracted me to come here, was the possibility of raising a young dog that I have in the same sort of environment which I grew up in. That's a lot of Soporos here. Of course, I grew up, or I went to school in Odessa, and we don't have cotton fields the way they have here, different kinds of fields. But as I look around, it's very familiar to me. And so one reason why I came here was the ability to then raise her in the same environment. So not only, yes, but that is one of the reasons I have a lot of time.
Mr. Lopez?
Yeah, my response is real simple. Yes, I intend to live here. In fact, to be a manager and to think of living elsewhere would be a mistake. I think that if you're going to make a decision for a community, you should live in it, experience it, and accept conversations from it. So right off the bat, yes, I have every intention to live here. Not only just simply live here, but to work here and to spend my resources here and to volunteer and submit to other organizations that I can to make it a worthwhile place to be. And visibility and transparency, I think the manager of living in a community is a must.
Both of you were able to partake in a quick tour of the facilities, since you all got here. Do you have any suggestions on improvements for these facilities? I'll start with Mr. Rodriguez again.
Yes, I did get a chance to tour. Prior to this, last week, I came here a few days earlier as well, and I drove around. And first of all, being someone who works here is just so special to think that I could come here and know the solution. I don't, I'm a good study, and I have the training and the techniques to understand what problems are, what people are telling me. But given that, there are some things. I actually should, a few folks out there, there are not very many north-south... Well, there are in fact, no. There is no north-south road that takes you from, say, Soporo Road to Iquita. And I think that's, as a result, you see where the traffic, bottlenecks around here, you see the effects, that sort of thing. So that's one of the things that I, anyway, stands out to me as an urban planning and as a city manager, of the kinds of things that you'd want to address here.
I think just looking around and taking the tour, I would say I was quite impressed with the volume of open space. I was also impressed with a lot of the activity that is actually happening already. Most times, people have a notion that there's not anything going on in the community here. There's constant development, there's constant work being done. Just from a visual observation, the thing you would want to do is create, obviously, sustainability. And sustainability is getting other developments in to provide places to eat, development to come in, to provide places for people to live, as well as to improve the transportation system, that I could easily see, and the element of creating jobs. Jobs have to be created here so that people can stay here, live here, be educated here, as well as experience religious or spiritual development, as well as mental development and physical development. And I think that getting those types of institutions inside of Soporo makes it much more sustainable, and I can already see that that is already taking place. And if the model of the city is a city with a mission to share, those types of things have to be included in that particular mission. Thank you.